...role to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
That's loud.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Should we just... Did he say?
Yes. The role. Role on...
Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor CMO.
Something wrong with the...
Counselor Edwards.
Something wrong with the...
Counselor Savi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Counsel Flynn.
Counsel McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present at this time. If all guests and my colleagues and counselors could please rise. Counselor Flynn will introduce our clergy for today, and I ask that everyone remain standing. After the invocation, he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor for me to introduce two wonderful women that I've known for many years, Sister Lois and Sister Florence. They're both with the mother house, Sisters of St. Joseph in Brighton. And I've known Sister Lois and Sister Florence due to their work with helping veterans but also providing so much compassion and assistance in helping so many people in our city. Sister Lois, by training, is a nurse, and she was at the Boston Medical Center for so many years, providing dedicated and compassionate assistance. She also provides nursing care to many veterans as well. So it's an honor for me to have Sister Lois and Sister Florence as well provide a prayer for our City Council. And I'd also like to recognize City Councilor Michael Flaherty's mother, who is also very close with Sister Lois and Sister Florence as well.
Today, we ask God's blessing on the session of City Council members as they deliberate on behalf of the citizens of Boston. As we gather, we are saddened and stand in solidarity with our Jewish sisters and brothers as they mourn and try to deal with such a horrific loss of lives and such a senseless tragedy. It feels as though the world is coming apart at the seams, and the world is in constant stress. But at the same time, we celebrate and congratulate the World Series champion Red Sox, a team of diverse players for the Cuban manager, who brings the importance of unity and togetherness to this game. And so, in this world we live in, we ask you, gracious God, guide this council as they move forward with open minds and listening hearts, knowing that they don't have all the answers, but sharing their expertise with each other and their constituents. Give them a vision of this city as love would make it, a city where the weak are protected and none go hungry, a city where benefits are protected and shared so that everyone can enjoy them, a city whose different people and cultures live with tolerance and mutual respect, a city where peace is built with justice and justice is fired with love. God give this council the courage to build such a city to help our world. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn, and thank you, Sister. At this time, Madam Clerk? Thank you. I know, I'm like trying to move along here. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes of the last council meeting are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor the Mayor.
Document number 1582, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $382,868 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Title III-A Area Plan Administration awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed to the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund administrative expenses of the Elderly Commission as the Boston Area Agency on Aging.
Madam Clerk, I just want to take a quick 10-minute recess. Thank you. We're back in session, and we'll start with communications from His Honor the Mayor.
Document number 1582, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $382,868 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Title III-A Area Plan Administration awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed to the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund administrative expenses of the Elderly Commission at the Boston Area Agency on Aging.
Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to ask that we suspend the rules and accept this grant for the Elderly Commission today. This grant will fund the administrative expenses of the Boston Elderly Commission as the Boston Area Agency on Aging, which helps 60-year-olds and older find help in their local communities. Bear with me. Six more days. This grant will allow the Elderly Commission to support and guide local nonprofits working in these types of services. This program provides much-needed funds to ensure we are allowing our elderly to live in community in the place they grew up and where their families live. It is holistic, and it's social, emotional, and economical services. It engages a population of our city 60 and over that want to continue to call Boston their home. That is why, as the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules and accept this grant today.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. At this time, Counselor Presley, who's the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Doc. 1582. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 1582 has been passed.
Document number 1583, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $237,500 in the form of a grant for the FY19 State Hazmat Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Hazmat Response. The grant will fund additional supplementary goods and services for the Boston Fire Department Hazmat Division.
Doc. 1583 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Document number 1584, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend, excuse me, the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the Immigrant Advancement Initiative awarded by the donor group to be administered by the Office of Immigrant Advancement. The grant will fund programs, initiatives, events, and small grants that enable immigrants to play an active role in the economic, civic, social, and cultural life of the City of Boston.
Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask that we suspend the rules and accept this grant for the Immigrant Advancement Initiative. This grant will fund programs like To Immigrants with Love, which is the mural project, or Immigrants Information Corners, where you can learn about city resources and U.S. citizenship. This grant will allow the Office of Immigrant Advancement to be nimble and innovative in how they support and guide immigrants and the variety of services they need. In these times when our immigrant brothers and sisters are under multiple insult and assault, we need to ensure we are supporting them as much as possible, and these funds will allow us to do that. As the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules and accept this grant today.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, who's the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Doc. 1584. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 1584 has been passed.
Document number 1585, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $5,000 in the form of a grant for the Emerging Artists Award awarded by the Boston Foundation to be administered by Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the original creation of contemporary artwork by emerging artists.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. It's pretty self-explanatory. This is a $5,000 grant. It's from the Boston Foundation. It will be used by the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture for the Emerging Artist Awards, and so I respectfully ask that we suspend the rules and pass this docket.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, who is the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Doc. 1585. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 1585 has been passed. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read 1586 through 1588, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Document number 1586, notices received from the Mayor of the appointment of Darlene Lombos as a member of the Living Wage Advisory Committee for term expiring March 1, 2021. Document number 1587, notices received from the Mayor of the appointment of Bridget Brown as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for term expiring October 1, 2021. And document number 1588, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing agreement between the City of Boston and Trinity Orient Heights Phase II Limited Partnership, Chapter 121A, Section 6A of Massachusetts General Laws.
Doc. 1586 through 1588 will be placed on file. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Document number 1083, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the Efficiency and Regionalization Grant awarded by the Mass Department of Revenue to be administered by the Office of Economic Development. The grant will fund the Greater Boston Regional Economic Compact Cities to hire a consultant who will develop an action plan of operational projects based on overlapping needs expressed in municipalities, communities, master plans.
Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Madam President, could you read the next two as well?
Perfect.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if we could read the next two dockets?
Thank you. Document number 1236, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $855,000 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Success Link Employment Program awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, passed to the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, to be administered by the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund summer jobs for 439 youth from July 9 through August 17, 2018. And document number 1239, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $33,500 in the form of a grant for the Survey and Planning awarded by the United States Department of Interior, passed through the Mass Secretary of the Commonwealth Archives to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund Phase III of the Roxbury Survey Update and the nomination for the Malcolm X Ella Little Collins House in Roxbury to the National Register of Historic Places.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a hearing on these three dockets together, so I'll just add a little bit more detail and then want to recommend passage of each of these orders. The first one, Doc. 1083, for the Compact Cities Grant, just in case you were curious, the six cities involved are Boston, Braintree, Somerville, Chelsea, Cambridge, and Quincy. The cities have been working together for the last two years, I think. It sounds like the last few years, without any formal funding, just each working internally on identifying projects for potential collaboration. This is the first year where there will be this funding for a consultant to identify specific, to create a to-do list, essentially, of projects that could span each of the cities. The topics will be in the categories of housing, transportation, sustainability, and economic development. And I want to thank Krista Zala Torres, Chief of Staff from the Office of Economic Development, for presenting on that one. The second one, Doc. 1236, we heard from Chief of Staff for HHS, Marta Rivera, on this grant, which is one that has been received the last few years similarly. It funded 469 youth to have youth summer jobs over the last summer, and the plan is for the same amount of funding to be stretched to fund 500 youth this upcoming summer through the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment. And finally, Doc. 1239, Environment Commissioner Carl Spector came and presented. This is a two-part grant. Most of it will go to the next phase of surveying Roxbury and understanding the historic parcels and who lived there and different aspects of what makes these parcels historically significant. There may be another phase in Roxbury, or they may wrap up with this phase and move on to a new neighborhood in years to come. And then there will be $5,000 set aside for the, to complete the nomination of the Malcolm X Ella Little Collins House in Roxbury to be nominated for the National Register of Historic Places. It's already under city-municipal historic protection, but want to make sure that the work is done, the research, the documentation, to be able to properly apply for the national recognition and protection as well. So again, respectfully recommend that all three dockets pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. At this time, Counselor Wu, who's the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of those three dockets. I will take them each separately. God bless you. For Doc. 1083, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 1083 has been passed. For Doc. 1236, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 1236 has been passed. And for Doc. 1239, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 1239 has been passed.
Document number 1397, audit for hearing to examine the safety of the City of Boston's gas infrastructure, the prevention of dangerous gas leaks, and preparedness for emergency response.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very informative hearing yesterday. It was about four and a half hours long. Wanted to begin by thanking my co-sponsors on this very timely and important topic, the District Counsel from South Boston and the Senior at-Large Counsel from Dorchester, and wanted to thank participation from the Counselor from East Boston, the Junior Counselor at-Large from Dorchester, the Counselor at-Large from South Boston, the Counselor from Roxbury, the Counselors from Reedville, the at-Large Counsel from Rosendale, and the Counselor from Back Bay. As you can see, I'm fully embracing our council rule that we mustn't name each other, only our districts. So it was really, and then every Counselor had staff there that was actively engaged. We had three panels. We began with folks from the administration who sort of gave some oversight in terms of what they have to do and what they ought to do in the unlikely but real event of emergency. We then had folks from the labor union, particularly the two presidents of the currently locked-out unions, National Grid workers, and Joe Curlo and John Bonaparte, as well as Rich Rogers and Darlene Lombos from the Greater Boston Labor Council. And then finally, we had our third panel of experts, academics, folks who've been working on these issues for quite a long time, Nathan Phillips, Audrey Schulman, and others. And then we had public testimony where a number of people weighed in. Tellingly, however unsurprisingly, it was important to note who was not there, and that was National Grid, who had been invited, and we wanted to have a constructive conversation, but a frank and an honest and perhaps a difficult conversation. They sent word to my office late on Friday of last week that they would not be attending. Similarly, we invited folks from the Department of Public Utilities, which is a state agency that plays a significant role in gas pipeline safety, and they too declined. It was very disappointing, but nevertheless, we had a very informative hearing. I ask respectfully that this matter remain in committee because there's still work that we need to do, and the co-sponsors and I, and working in concert with all of you, need to figure out what our next steps are.
Thank you.
Because we recognize the fact that we have an issue here. What happened in the Merrimack Valley could very well happen in the City of Boston. We have similarly old and in disrepair infrastructure, and we need to do, we have an opportunity and an obligation to do everything we possibly can to make sure that we have a safe city for residents and visitors alike. So there will be further steps taken. Right now, I ask that matter remain in committee and thank all of you for your participation and engagement at yesterday's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be very brief. I just wanted to say thank you to Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, and all my colleagues on the City Council for your participation, but more importantly, for your work for so many years in helping the working men and women of this city, along with the Mayor's administration for also being there for our working families. Again, I'm proud of the work Counsel O'Malley and Counsel Presley did and all my colleagues did yesterday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Doc. 1397 will remain in the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Document number 1589, Counselors Flynn and Campbell offer the following order for a hearing to discuss domestic violence and sexual assault in the City of Boston.
I'm sorry. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you, Madam President. For your leadership on this important issue, I stand today to discuss a topic that is unfortunately still with us today in society, the state of Massachusetts and the city, and that is domestic violence and sexual assault. This month, October, has been Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As a former probation officer, I worked closely with victims and those that committed acts of domestic violence as well. I also know the great work the City of Boston is also doing on this important issue, and I acknowledge and commend Mayor Walsh and his administration as well. We in the City of Boston take great pride in knowing that the nation often looks to us for guidance due to our progressive policies and outlook on so many different issues. However, according to Jane Doe, Inc., the Massachusetts Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, I'm afraid that our communities are not immune to this criminal behavior. According to data compiled by Jane Doe, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the 2010 National Partner Survey, statistics indicate that Massachusetts was on par with national averages. Nearly 1 in 3 women and 1 in 5 men in Massachusetts have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lives. 11% of high school students, 6% of middle school students reported being hurt by a date sometime in their life. Between 2003 and 2012, Jane Doe identified 266 victims of domestic violence-related homicides and an additional 74 domestic violent homicide deaths in Massachusetts. In addition, it was noted that these statistics may not account for immigrants, members of the LGBTQ community, and those who may be hesitant to contact law enforcement. I believe we have a responsibility to seek ways to reduce domestic violence and increase reporting opportunities for all of our communities. It is imperative that we educate people from every neighborhood in Boston, providing a comforting and safe atmosphere for victims, and offer an outlet to those who may be hesitant to speak out. This is work that I would like to continue and look to build on from back when my mother, Kathy Flynn as the first lady, worked on domestic violence programs. I'm proud of the work that she did, but I'm also proud of the work so many other mothers did throughout our city on this important issue. In the final analysis, I want to have this conversation to make sure we are doing all we can as a city to increase awareness about domestic violence, sexual assault in our city, to make sure we are doing all we can to educate the public, that we're doing all we can to support victims, and offer opportunities for reporting for all communities, and hopefully find ways to reduce and bring about an end to this criminal behavior. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Campbell.
Sorry, I think I messed it up. Thank you, Counselor CMO, and thank you, Counselor Flynn, for your partnership on this. I think you summed it up, so I won't belabor the points. I think the data, of course, is astounding and quite sad. And given the context of these issues that we're talking about, I think this is an opportune time for the city to have a conversation and to bring different stakeholders, not just law enforcement, not just the Health Commission, but the incredible organizations that do work on the ground every single day in this space, together at a hearing, but also over a series of conversations to figure out what more the City of Boston could do, not just for those who are outside of our city employ, but even those who have concerns who may be city employees. I want to thank Counsel Presley in particular for her work on this, even before, of course, we joined the council, and her steadfast leadership on these issues, which we will continue. So thank you, Counselor Flynn, for the partnership. I look forward to the first hearing, and then I'm sure several conversations in the new year about this, about what concrete new year about this, about what concrete solutions, whether it, in terms of reporting, making it easier for folks to come forward, housing, or cash assistance, or other things that are being used around the country to make it easier for folks who are involved in domestic violence incidents. And let's just be clear, domestic violence incidents, this is a cycle. These are patterns of behavior. They're not one-offs. When it comes to those who are court-involved, multi-court battered women, Northeastern University Law School in particular has a clinic that focuses on this, there's a lot more that we need to do to address these issues and to make it easier, not just for folks to be heard, but to also remedy their circumstances, to allow them to be healthy, loved, and to live in a safe community. So thank you, Council Flynn, again.
Thank you. Council Flaherty.
Please add Council Flaherty's name. Council Asabi George, Council Edwards, Council Janey, Council McCarthy, Council Pressley, Council O'Malley, Council Wu, and the Chair, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Council Zakum.
That's what happens when you get amateurs up there behind the podium. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just, I rise to ask my name be added, but also I do want to commend the makers particularly for pointing out the issues that people in our immigrant communities have with reporting crimes of domestic violence and sexual assault. When this body passed the Trust Act, and Mayor Walsh signed it four years ago, that was one of the central reasons that we thought it was important that people, regardless of their immigration status, could safely call the Boston Police for assistance, to work with the Boston Health Commission and others in the City of Boston, and especially now, years later, where every day there are attacks on immigrants, where people are living in fear, in many cases rightfully so. We do need to remind folks, at least in the City of Boston, that interacting with our city agencies, with the Boston Public Health Commission, with the Boston Police Department, that information's not going to be shared. Our Boston Police Department does not detain people based on their immigration status, and I think this is an incredibly important discussion to have, and we need to be finding more tools in the toolbox. So thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Please add Council Zakum's name and assign Docket 1589 to the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Council Siomo. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1590, Council Campbell for Council Zakum.
Council Zakum seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 15, I'm sorry, 1590. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. 1590 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which, in the absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. It's a personnel order, just to be clear. Seeing and hearing no objection, the matter is added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could read that late-file matter into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. In the City Council, October 30th, 2018, Council Campbell for Council Asabi George.
Council Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter, which is a personnel order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The late-file matter has been passed. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? No, moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda, seeing and hearing, actually, let me just correct that. Zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. Right, Madam Clerk?
One, consent.
But that was not, this is something. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been passed. Just before I move on to any announcements, or if anyone wants to sort of say anything before the meeting ends, obviously, congratulations to the Red Sox, so thank you for that. Victory, Red Sox, very good day. And just a point of clarification on the rules. We had some back and forth related to signs, so I had two lady check-in with every office on whether or not they wanted to allow signs in the chamber. Currently, the rules say no signs. The majority won. I sort of removed myself from that, but the majority, I removed myself to the very end, and so there was a larger majority to keep the rules as they are currently written, which is to have no signs in the chamber. Central staff will go around and talk to every office, particularly those who wanted it, and tell you why and what the conversation was, but just wanted to say that before all of you, I don't want to make these decisions when it comes to the rules unilaterally, so just putting that out there. Council Wu, you have the floor.
Unanimous request for unanimous consent to make a statement on Halloween.
Go ahead.
You can see the sort of remnants of it, but I wanted just to give a big, big thank you to Madam President and her team, central staff, and all of the offices for making sure that the daycare kids had a really, really fun trick-or-treating around the chamber earlier. They're napping now, so they were on the verge of melting down, but we had a tunnel over here, the Council Zakum's office built through spider webs, and a lot of other departments came and passed out candy to the kids here as well. They didn't get to go all around the building this year, so this is really special for them, and I know so many offices came, helped set up, helped take down, and got to spend some time with them. So thank you from all of those families.
Thank you, Council Wu, and thank you to every counselor in the teams for making this a special occasion. We heard really good things, so thank you, and thank you, Council Wu, for taking the lead. Council Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you. I ask unanimous consent to make an invitation regarding a Narcan training tomorrow at 11:00 in the Curly Room.
Thank you.
I hope everyone, part of our discussions around the opioid crisis and the work that we could be doing, one of the requests was to do some of these trainings, so we did it about a year, a little bit over a year ago. So we have the Boston Public Health Commission team in here tomorrow to do a Narcan training, all counselors and staff. Anyone here in City Hall is welcome to join us from 11 to about, we should, we'll be done by noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Asabi George. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Just wanted to give everyone an update, something that happened in our neighborhood this morning. What was discovered at the Tynan School this morning was, it is what it was. It's disgusting hate speech on behalf of the community. And I speak for Council Flynn, as well as our whole neighborhood. We're disgusted. We're saddened and we're outraged at what appeared on the doors of the Tynan Elementary School and the damage that was done to that school, as well as to our community. That's not who we are as a community, it's not who we are as a city. There's no space for that type of divisive behavior. Our schools should be safe havens for our children to learn and to grow, regardless of their race, their religion, ethnicity. This morning, we spoke to BPS officials, as well as school administrator at the Tynan, along with the captain of the Boston Police Department. We've been in touch also with the mayor and the school superintendent to address this matter, so we're committed to finding the person responsible, the persons responsible for this, and will continue to be a resource for the Tynan School and the greater community at large, which is our whole city. So Council Flynn and I are working with the local elected officials and probably do something like coffee and conversation or community breakfast either tomorrow morning or Friday morning at the school, but, and we'll obviously invite our colleagues to attend, but just want to make sure that, didn't let the day go by without recognizing how disgusted that we were with what occurred. Council Flynn went down there first thing this morning on behalf of the council and met immediately with the principal and the superintendent, as well as the police captain, and we're committed to get some additional lighting down there. We're also working to get some cameras down there as well, so we're going to continue to work together, do our part, but just wanted to put it on the record that the community as a whole is absolutely disgusted and outraged at what occurred, on which should have been a great celebratory day today with our Boston Red Sox. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty, and thank you, Council Flynn. Anyone else looking to make an announcement? At this time, I'd like all guests and colleagues to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Janey, Osceola Nathan. For Council Baker, Margaret Brown. For Council McCarthy and Council Baker, Edward Paris. For Council Flaherty, James Satori Jr. and BPD Sergeant Danny Bosmer. For Council Siomo, Eileen Cummings. And for the entire council, Thomas Kelly, the son of the late Boston City Council Jimmy Kelly. And of course, for the entire council, the Pittsburgh Tree of Life synagogue shooting victims. A moment of silence, please. At this time, the Chair moves for, that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, November 7th, at 12:00 noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.[1712.61]